The meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Ms. Stephan?
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
White? Schwartz?
Here.
Troika?
Here. Now we will have a moment of silence to reflect on actions. And if everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign. Public comments? Do we have anybody for public comments? We have no one. Years of Service Award.
We have one award today for Susie Manross for 20 years from the assessor's office. I don't see her here.
Okay, do we have anybody present to take the award? Congratulations to her on her years of service. Claims and payments.
Check total came out to 112,313 10 cents. It's pretty low relatively speaking. Everything looked normal. The biggest item on there was the sheriff's office for 52,837. But again, everything else looked normal, so.
Okay, so we have a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Oh, roll call. Roll call vote.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. Now to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Kathy Nicholas, can I have the TV on for a brief few minutes? The paved road system is in good condition. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The paved road system is in good condition this morning as well as the gravel road condition. We're seeing very good conditions out there right now with slow thawing on the gravel road system, which is wonderful, much better than last year. Hopefully it stays that way that the rain, you know, comes in moderation this spring and will be in good shape. I just wanted to show you a few photos from out at the Cedar Wapsy Bridge Project. These were taken last Friday morning. Work is continuing on the bridge project. PCI is making good progress now on the pier construction in the middle of the river. Last Friday, we had invited some Hawkeye Community College, some civil engineering technology construction students to come out and see what was going on. There was a concrete pour at the pier going to be taking place a little bit later that morning. And I just put in a few photos to show you. Currently, the Hawkeye class has approximately 20 students in the first year. And here's Mike Kinchi, our, one of our technicians, showing them the pile driving apparatus and explaining to them what's going to be going on that, with that activity. And then here's Ryan showing the students why it's important that we're monitoring the internal temperature of the piers, the concrete temperature of the piers. And it was cold that morning, so they only stuck around for about an hour, but we definitely invited them back to see more when the weather warms up, the beam setting and the concrete deck construction, for example. So that's it for my update. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Director Nafisa, Cise Abonye, I'm here to update you all on coronavirus. So the Iowa Department of Public Health is updating the information on their website Monday, Wednesdays, and Friday. Information is coming to us rapidly, so bear with us as we push down the information also to our local partners. And I'll continue to update the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health. The Iowa Department of Public Health, they're working closely with the local health departments to implement screening and monitoring guidelines for coronavirus for travelers returning from mainland China and travelers returning from any other. The new virus is also called COVID-19. Affected areas, in particular areas with Level 2 or 3, CDC travel advisory should self-isolate and remain home for 14 days to monitor for symptoms such as a fever, cough, and shortness of breath. So this doesn't take into account like layoffs. And so those right now are not considered being in an affected area. So affected countries are South Korea, Iran, Italy, and Japan. Again, with spring break coming, I highly urge the public to review their travel plans to make sure it's not in areas where it's affected by Corona. Healthcare providers now with the state that we can do testing for coronavirus. So they're conducting screening at patient check-in to identify potential cases. And they're coordinating with Iowa Department of Public Health to assess the risk and arrange for testing. Right now for Iowa, we are low. We remain, the risk remains very low. And also, people do not need to wear masks. That's one of the things that we're dealing with, that just shortness of supplies because everybody's buying masks. What else? The health department is working closely with our local partners, the business community, childcare centers, universities. So we're pushing down as much information as the faster we get it, we do our best. We've set up internally a system where we can receive calls and rapidly answer to people's questions. For department heads here, please do feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions in regards to staff traveling or concerns. Thank you.
Do you have all the tools and resources at this point to?
Yes, at this point.
Feel confident?
Yes.
You can be more proactive?
Yes, at this point we do. And we're, we have preparedness plans in particular. Those are things that we have updated this, at the beginning of this year, so we're ready. And also, I just want to remind everybody, it's still flu season. It's widespread in Iowa. And so a lot of times, people might confuse it with Corona, but they need to really go and get their flu vaccines and also just take the preventative measures of being at home, staying at home when one is sick and covering their coughs. And really, one of the things that we're pushing is washing the hands. People are substituting it with hand sanitizers, but it's washing your hands with warm water and soap that's known to be more preventative.
So it's never too late to get your flu shot?
Never too late, never too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials have an update? We'll move on to approval of the minutes from the February 25th meeting. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign. Number seven is the consent agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye? Roll call vote.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. Contracts and agreements. Resolution that the lowest responsive bid received from Aspro Incorporated Waterloo, Iowa, letting held February 18th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. for STBG dash SWAP dash C007 in parentheses, 159 dash dash FG dash 07 and FM dash C007 in parentheses, 160 dash dash 55 dash.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, so these are, this is our two large paving projects this construction season. We have tied them together in an attempt to get larger, more quantity to try and get more bidders. So these were led by the Iowa DOT several weeks ago. We did just have the one bidder, Aspro Incorporated here from Waterloo. The prices are a bit higher than they were last year. A little bit higher than what we had budgeted for even, but we will find the money in our FM account, for example. Part of this money we are receiving is federal funding from the MPO here, the local metropolitan planning organization, $900,000. And the rest of it will be FM money and local money. So I would ask that you approve this contract and proceed with getting the contracts then.
Any other questions?
Didn't catch all that, could you repeat?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. Item 8B, a resolution that the lowest responsive bid received from Taylor Construction Incorporated, New Vienna, Iowa, letting held February 18th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. for project BROS dash SAWAP dash C007 in parentheses, 157 dash dash 5E dash 07 for bridge replacement of King Road Bridge.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, this was also led at the DOT the same day, February 18th. We got a good number of bidders. We had four bidders that morning. The DOT received those bids. Taylor Construction was the low bidder. We had budgeted $380,000 for this project. This is what, is the swap money, so it's federal money, but the state is giving it to us as state money so that we don't have to have Davis Bacon or prevailing wages, et cetera, on the project. So they did come under, under our engineer's estimate at $328,000. I would recommend that you approve this. We've worked with Taylor quite a bit, off and on over the years. They do a nice job of bridge construction.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. 8C, resolution that the lowest responsive bid received from Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, letting held February 25th, 2020 at 9:05 a.m. for project L dash 1704 dash 73 dash 07 for HMA resurfacing on Spring Creek Road.
Second.
Kathy?
So as you called, this was one of the bids that we opened here in the courtroom, or the room here last week. We just did just have the one bidder, Aspro Incorporated. It is over our engineer's estimate, and it's also slightly over our budgeted amount. We had budgeted $900,000. We will make up the difference out of our local construction money. So they were the lone bidder. We need to get the project done, so I would recommend that you accept this bid.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. 8D, resolution that the lowest responsive bid received from Heartland Asphalt Incorporated of Mason City, Iowa, letting held February 25th, 2020 at 9:07 a.m. for project L dash 2006 dash 73 dash 07 for HMA resurfacing on Pioneer Drive and Union Circle. Kathy?
So this was the second project we did open in this room last week. To our surprise, we had two bidders. We have never received a bid from Heartland Asphalt before, but they were in fact a low bid by about $350. So I'm recommending that you take their bid. We've never worked with them, but they're, they do work all over northeast Iowa, and we're looking forward to beginning a working relationship with them.
Are they in the area, Kathy? That's where they bid on it.
So they're in the Mason City area?
Yeah, I understand what I mean. They must have a project around here or something.
They could have. We haven't really discussed, we haven't really talked to them yet. We're not supposed to talk to them yet until you've accepted the bid. So I don't really know.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troika?
Yes. Other business. 9A, a motion that the personnel requisition for the office specialist full-time in the Veterans Affairs Office be approved as recommended.
Second.
This is a backfill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. A motion that the personnel requisition request for an equipment operator, number two, full-time replacement effective April 27th, 2020.
Second.
Kathy?
So we do have a longtime motor grader operator who will be retiring April 24th. We already know several people are most likely interested in moving up the union, so we're sure that this will be backfilled and then we'll probably be coming back to you to fill an equipment operator one position, the entry-level position. If we start now, we're hoping that we can have a person in place by the April 27th date.
All right, all those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign. A motion that the personnel, a motion that the personnel requisition for equipment operator one, full-time replacement effective February 23rd. Kathy?
Yeah, this is another backfill due to an equipment operator one B who retired and then that person, a different person took that position. Now we're backfilling with an entry-level equipment operator one position. So I'd ask that you approve this, please.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign. 9D, a motion that the travel requests submitted by Catherine Nichols, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign the same.
All moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, so this would cover the National Association of County Engineers, the annual meeting. It's being held in, near Gulf Shores this, in April. I'd like to attend. I am now the Secretary of the Iowa County Engineers Association. And I think it's in our interest to show that, just to network with other county engineers, find out what the newest advances are and.
Gulf Shores in April, temperatures 75, 80, limited humidity.
Should be nice.
That's right.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
9E, a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 a.m. on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 77 dash 238 from a request submitted by Richard and Mary Kettman. Does anybody have any input upon this?
Just advertise right at this point.
All right, all those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Right.
Opposed, same sign. 9F, a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 a.m. on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 in Boardroom 201 of the.
All moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed, same sign. Item 9G, discussion and possible board action in regard to the discussion of road embargoes as recommended by Catherine Nichols, county engineer. Kathy, why aren't you running this meeting?
Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. It's typical, you know, typical, a lot of springs that we do embargo, a few of our seal coat roads. Typically, it's been one or two roads that we embargo every spring just to protect that pavement from deterioration, from keeping some of the heavier loads off of it. They tend to be embargoed around 10 tons. The Iowa code allows us to do that for up to 90 days in a calendar year. With this last spring, there was a few other seal coat roads that we did embargo as well. There are ones that we haven't embargoed in the past and that did cause some challenges for us and some challenges for residents. There are some services that are needed on those roads. There is some businesses that need to have some access. With embargoing the roads to protect the road, we didn't really have a formal process in place to actually allow them to travel over that embargoed road, whether it be limited use, certain number of trips, maybe reduced weight from what they would normally be hauling. One way of accomplishing that and one way that's allowed in the code would essentially be to issue a permit for them to travel over the embargoed road. They would still tend to be above the embargoed limit, but it would at least allow us to have some discussion with them on, you know, maybe they are looking at reducing the weight to limit the impact, or they're limiting the number of trips. You know, maybe they're traveling, you know, when it's still colder and we still have some frost in the road and we try and make some accommodations where we can still protect our infrastructure while not limiting them too much in operating their business, their farm, whatever that may be. So it's a process we've looked into. We've kind of put a draft permit together. There are several other counties that do issue permits for embargoed roadways. We kind of looked at their process as well, as far as what they have for permits, to try and be consistent with that.
How many roads are you looking at this year?
This year, all we did, I mean, well, this, this last year, we embargoed four. I don't know what we would do this year. It's really going to depend on how the conditions are and how frost and moisture are for the rest of the spring. So it's something where we may embargo some and we may not, just depending on the conditions each year.
If you're going to embargo a road, are you going to notify, you notify the people that live on the road, the schools, the fire and everything?
Yeah, yeah, I know. This last year, we were coordinating with schools to still get, you know, school bosses down or coordinating school bus stops.
Or businesses.
Garbage is always a very difficult one to handle, and that's something we had to work through this last year as well, so.
So you're not looking for approval today, you're just looking to say that you may be bringing it to a board at a future date?
I guess that's up to you guys and what you'd like to do. I mean, we have a permit that we've started. The sooner we have a process in place, I think is beneficial from our end. One of the big things that, you know, to figure out with this, some counties do charge for a permit, some counties don't charge for the permit. We feel that a nominal fee is at least, you know, it makes sense to us in some ways just for the time that goes into the permits that we have to handle, if we have to monitor some of that traffic. I mean, it at least helps us kind of.
But we're somewhat putting a hardship on some of the residents, businesses and so forth, so.
Yeah, I mean, any other.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with a fee for the permit. How long would it be, for 90 days?
90 days is the length of the embargo. I mean, the permit length could be, you know, very, very short, or it could be a longer permit length too. It just depends on.
Longer than 90?
Well, the, the permit itself wouldn't be good for longer than 90. It would be good for that period at most. It could be good for a week. It just depends on how we.
I guess, how do you see the process working, Ryan?
I mean, it would be very similar to any of our oversized overweight permits. Those are permits that we get in every day. They're available online. People fill them out, email them in. We review the permits and email the permits back to them. People can come into the office and fill them out.
So whether you did it with or without a cost, it would still be the permitting process?
Yeah, right now, any of our oversized overweight permits, I do have a fee. That's just tracked in our office and billed monthly to the people that get the permits.
I don't have a problem with it. I wouldn't want to sit here today and build out a blanket open, you know. I don't know how you're going to do, if you're going to do it individually all the time or do it in groups. But I think that'd be more appropriate to bring it to the board each time. I'm not saying one every time, but.
I mean, yeah, it's one of those where we would look at the specific load.
Sure.
Time they fill out the permit and kind of, you know, look and see if, I mean, if we feel that that load can make it down the road without causing excessive damage.
And basically, we're relying on your expertise in the engineer's office. It's just that, you know, we're the ones up here probably have to deal with the residents or businesses or so forth, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I think if that's what you want to do, I don't have any trouble as long as we bring it to the board and we notify the people and the different agencies.
Do you intend to come back to us, I guess, with a proposed, like a final? I'm thinking basically like from violation standpoint and that type of thing.
Violation's actually written in the code. There's actually a, I think it's $2 per hundred weight over, over the posted roadway load that can be charged as a fine. So as far as the fines, that's already in the Iowa code.
And I know because of the season, you're probably assuming soon you might need this if this were to be something.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's one of those things where we'll just keep track of the roads as.
And it's all determined how the roads are going to be too. We don't have any idea how they're going to turn out compared to last year, so.
It may be a process we implement and use very little this year. But it's nice to have it in place in case it's needed.
So it could be used in the future years, yeah.
Have you done the permit thing in the past?
We've never issued a permit for a posted road in the past. Again, we issue permits for any oversized overweight travel. You know, pretty routinely, we get those permits in and out every day.
You do issue embargoes. How do those usually, I was going to say, how are those received from some of the residents, obviously? Because that does create hardship.
I mean, I think last year, overall, I mean, we had a few complaints that came in our office from it, but for the most part, we were able to work through it with the residents. There were some people that, you know, maybe had a trailer with some construction equipment that they had to leave at a different site. They couldn't get it in and out of their house every day. There was some farms that were trying to haul some grain with tractor trailer, you know, semis. And we tried to work with them to make some accommodations where they could haul certain times of day that, you know, wouldn't affect the roadway as much if they hauled during, you know, the heat of the day at 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon. So, I mean, we worked through it last year. There wasn't really process that we could follow. We kind of had to take it individual by individual and try and work through the issues with them.
And I'm assuming every road's different too, so.
Can be.
Circumstances are going to be different, so. I don't have a problem if you just work with the board, so in case we field any phone calls.
So, so do you want like authorization from us to proceed with this and put a process into place to bring back to the board? Or how best does this work for you? I guess since the time, since spring's coming.
Yeah, I guess, how do you, I mean, if we don't have a.
Well, you have the authority already to embargo.
Post road, yes.
Already, I mean, the board does. So really, are you just talking about a permit process, what you're asking the board or?
Yes.
Because you embargo anyway, you did last year, you're going to this year.
We, we bring that, when we want to embargo a road, we bring that to you. You formally approve it. You'll put up a sign. Now we're probably going to put up a sign that says except by permit or unless by permit or something. You can exceed the ton-ton limit unless, or if you have a permit, for example. We would then send letters to the residents, to the businesses that we think will be impacted. Of course, that's not going to catch everyone. If we don't catch them, they will see the sign. Hopefully, they're reading our sign and they'll know that they're not supposed to be on that road if they, they're over 10 tons, but they should call our office, talk to us about a permit. And Ryan can talk to them and give them further details about when they can use the road, if that's possible, for these 90 days. Sometimes the embargoes come off in 60 days. It's just hard to know, as you know. But we would like to have, be able to work, to have a permit process finalized if we can charge a fee or not, and we can move forward then. We have talked it over with Pete and he did some research into the code and.
Other counties have it, you say?
Yeah, there's at least half a dozen other that we could at least find permits for unlimited.
For the embargoes.
Yep, for embargo.
And Pete, with your review, you saw no problem with it as far as something.
No, you know, I do see a bit of a problem developing here with getting the board's approval each time. And that's something that, of course, you need to decide whether or not you want to do that. But boy, an embargo situation like we had this past spring, that's all you guys will be doing is granting permits. So you may want to take a look at that. I think that it would probably be better if there was a more specific plan presented to you. And so I, I think what you're doing today, as the agenda indicates, you're discussing this. Then a specific plan could come back to you. You've indicated that you don't want to charge a fee, or maybe you do want to charge a fee. Well, you could discuss that in developing that plan.
So you're saying any embargo on a road doesn't come to the Board of Supervisors? Pete?
Pardon?
No embargo of the road has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors?
Well, yes, every, every year you do that. You embargo.
So I've seen individual line items. We don't have to do that?
I don't think the code requires you to grant these exceptions. And whether or not you wish to have a voice in that is something you should decide.
And I think sometimes we've done it after the fact. You've, I think, posted and told and advised us that you were doing it, but then we've kind of come back and mentioned it at a board meeting. Yes, last, last spring was probably a good example of that where vehicles were just getting stuck in the seal-coated road and tow trucks had to get them out, for example. And so we went out immediately and posted the road and then came back to you and said, we need to get this on the next agenda. And we're still proposing that we're going to have you approve every single road embargo, even if it's an emergency. We'll be here the next, you know, within the next week to have your approval.
I think what Pete's adjusted is probably appropriate is put together, I mean, you know, you don't make a complicated lengthy, just put together a procedure that you want to follow, including the permit and blah, 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 and give it to the board for approval.
Now, I want, I like that each and every embargo comes to us, but I don't want each and every permit to come to us.
and every permit to come to us, and I, I think there should be a fee charged for the permit.
Yeah, see, I disagree with that, but that's something that the board can vote on and make a decision on.
Yeah, I would think, like, come with a recommendation or your thoughts on it, or why or why not, or, so we can consider.
You should be able to get something on the agenda next week or so, I mean, until you're in place.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a draft permit itself, the form already completed.
Along, along with that, I want to see the procedure that you're going to do to embargo that road, like contact the people, sign each and things like that, you know, simple. And that way, the board's got something, they know what to approve, we can move on.
Okay. Any comments, Chris?
No, I, I would agree that, you know, I lay a embargo, it's coming, I don't want permits coming to us.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is for closed session. We have a resolution that pursuant to provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session at about 9:11 a.m. with an attorney to discuss strategy with counsel in matters of potential litigation pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5, paragraph 1C.
All moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Layland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Troka?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Rory, can you get us ready? You know what you're doing?
Takes.
All right. We will now entertain a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors' meeting in closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
I'm making a motion, we table Resolution C to a further date.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, any reports or information from the board?
You might have, do we have to, Rory?
Chris?
I'm just having a great conference here at the NACODE Legislative Conference. I look forward to sharing all the information with you all when I get back. My next thing I'm heading to is a, a hearing on Capitol Hill on the federal Medicaid exclusion for, for county jail inmates, and of course, we're aware of how, how that affects us and how that relates to recidivism and everything, and so really excited to bring that information back to Iowa and to talk to our federal legislators about that this afternoon.
Excellent. Linda?
No, nothing today.
Tom?
I've got something very brief. When I, and I, I'm not saying I support this, but this, a retired Waterloo firefighter brought this up with me. Yesterday, I had a meeting where two individuals brought it up. One was a retired Cedar Falls firefighter. The other was a current Waterloo firefighter who's associated with volunteers in La Porte City, and I said I would publicly break the ice on this. I would research it. Again, I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, but I'm willing to delve into it, but I want people to contact me, and that is a metro fire department, discussion of it. I'm not saying to make it happen, I'm not saying I support it, because the, the point I made at this meeting with volunteer firefighters was I think there, it needs, if it's a discussion we're going to have, each individual community needs to maintain their identity with their chosen firefighters, whether they're volunteer, part-time, paid on call, full-time like Waterloo, that's important. What's important for me, and as a representative of the county board, is a cost effective. And what's also important is it going to enhance our current services. So those are the issues that I think are important, and I'm big on the cost effectiveness, being fiscally responsible, and then how do we pay for it?